Good evening. This regular meeting of October 11th, 2021, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Barton?
Here.
Bradley?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prahaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education amend the agenda as submitted and move old business under visitors and open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education amend the agenda as submitted and move old business to under visitors and open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the purpose of that is to pull forward the discussion.
The discussion.
Yeah, for out of courtesy for the people who are here so they don't wait through a whole agenda.
Yep.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 13th and the special board meeting on September 20th, 2021, as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 13th and the special board meeting on September 20th, 2021, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And Board salutes. I don't have any that I know of right now. We've got a lot on the agenda, so we'll just go ahead and go on. All right.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, we are going to allow for 30 minutes of open forum. We did sit and receive over three and a half hours of public input from the community and we are, as well as hundreds of emails that all of us have received, so that we feel that we have given the public a lot of time to be able to share their concerns and we are adding an additional 30 minutes onto this. And I am going to ask that for every side that is presented, the next speaker be the opposite to be presented. So that'll give a balance of about five speakers per side. And then we will close down the open forum and public discussion. So with that, we will ask that you state your name clearly and your affiliation with the district. You will have three minutes to speak. We are asking that everybody, please remember to be respectful to the speakers. We're asking that there be no heckling or comments made to any speaker that is up at the podium or afterwards. We want to keep this as civil and respectful for everybody that is involved and everybody has a right to have their comments to be heard by the entire board and everybody here present. So with that, we are open now for our first. Anybody wishing to come forward can go to the podium. Thank you.
My name is James Walker. I'm a resident of Dubuque. I think asking children to mitigate a threat less significant than the typical flu is inexplicable. There are not 400 school-aged kids, five to 18, dead with COVID-19 in the USA. More kids drowned in the U.S. in the past 12 months than have died with COVID-19 in the last 18 months. More kids have committed suicide in the past 12 months than have died with COVID-19 in the past 18 months. In order to have a worthwhile discussion, we must have a common understanding of the words we use. When we speak of cases, what do we mean? Do we mean a sick person who could stay home from school as has served us well for centuries? Or do we mean someone who is said to have tested positive for COVID? Do we all understand what a positive test means? There are two major tests presently. The CDC declared the gold standard PCR test for which the CDC has recently withdrawn its request for emergency use authorization as of December 31st due to its inaccuracy and what the CDC says is a less accurate rapid test. Is the Board aware that in one of the few accurate statements by Dr. Fauci, he said that at 35 cycles, a PCR test is meaningless? All of the commercially available PCR tests were instructed to be run at far above 35 cycles. At 35 cycles, the PCR test yielded 97.3% false positives. Dr. Carey Mullis, the inventor of the PCR technology, said it should not be used for medical diagnosis. To determine mask policy based on positive tests rather than serious illnesses in school-aged children is a mistake. It is literally impossible to tell an asymptomatic case from a false positive. Incidentally, recent studies, including one study involving almost 10 million people, have shown that there is no significant asymptomatic transmission of SARS-CoV-2. As you have been made aware, 70 years of peer-reviewed, randomized, controlled tests have shown that masks have no efficacy in reducing transmission of laboratory-confirmed influenza. The few recent studies that allege such protection have, by and large, been refuted or withdrawn. Reporting 97% false positive tests as cases has terrorized our population. Fortunately, the pandemic narrative is rapidly falling apart as people become aware of the facts. The school board, teachers, and school administrators should not sacrifice for the remains of their credibility by not expending the minimal effort required to investigate the veracity of assertions by financially and politically conflicted bureaucrats in the media. This three-minute format does not allow for what would be an easy refutation of any remaining attempts at justification for proposed masking policies. Trust, but verify.
Hello, my name is Jeff Lenhart and I reside at 670 Harvard Street here in Dubuque. While attending high school and growing up in Manchester, Iowa, my government teacher, Mr. Schultz, taught me that my voice matters and that I have a responsibility to speak up on issues that I find important, and that's why I'm here. The mission, as Tammy stated, of the Dubuque Community School District is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. As I stated in an email to each of you last week, your role as a school board member is to be dedicated to ensuring that children in this district receive an education that remains true to this mission. But tonight, I want to focus on a particular word in that mission statement, and that's "safe." Our community and our world are still very much affected by COVID-19, and I encourage each of the board members tonight to enact a mask mandate for the district's children, staff members, administrators, and school board members. In addition, this requirement should pertain to all visitors to any district building also. Studies have proven that wearing face coverings along with vaccines are preventative measures such as frequent hand washing and physical distancing helps slow the spread of COVID-19. The number of cases in this district is higher today than at this time last year, when, as you may recall, masks were required in our community and within the district. The virus has no boundaries. Children and staff members who get infected will likely infect others, some of whom are at high risk for hospitalization and death. Failing to enact a district-wide mandate tonight shows a disregard for all members of this community. Nobody wants to deal with COVID-19, but it can be tremendously difficult for those who live paycheck to paycheck. I don't have the same resources as those who sit on this board who are lucky enough to have. A COVID diagnosis can mean expensive healthcare visits and time away from work when many individuals are already struggling to make ends meet. I know many of you have heard from people on both sides of this issue, but I was disappointed to hear from a friend who, after she expressed her views to some of you, two members responded accusing her of being condescending and threatening. That's not helpful, more importantly, that's not good leadership. In a district that encourages students and staff to be respecting, caring, and responsible, it's disappointing that some on our school board choose not to follow those values. This pandemic won't last forever, but until we can safely say it's over, we must put the health of our community first. And that starts with voting tonight in support of face masks. Thank you.
I don't know if we'll give another three minutes towards an anti-mask mandate because I actually wasn't going to talk about a mask mandate. But I'm Whitley Joel and I'm a mother of four kids currently in school. In Minnesota, fourth graders completing equity surveys were told that they were not allowed to skip any questions they didn't understand. They weren't allowed to ask parents for help or repeat any of the questions to their parents. A Utah teacher was recorded telling her students that she hated Donald Trump because he is a sexual predator and a literal moron. When a student asked why that was being brought up in chemistry class, she responded, "Go tattle on me to the administration. They don't give a crap." She then proceeded to tell the students that most of their parents were dumber than them. A Wisconsin teacher was caught on tape calling a student a dick and a jerk after the student voiced his opinion that because he's vaccinated, he shouldn't have to wear a mask. An Iowa teacher in Indianola shared a video explaining how to skirt the Iowa CRT ban by purposely drumming up questions from the students, and then she justified that she wasn't teaching CRT but simply answering the students' questions. During the 2020 election cycle, my middle schoolers shared that they knew the political affiliation of every teacher with the exception of one social studies teacher. A science teacher at Roosevelt even went so far as to say that he was happy Trump lost because Trump is a racist. In seventh grade this year, my daughter was asked if she agreed with pride, and when she said she did, a student piped up with "good, now I know you're a good person." Add all this to the steady stream of CNN that they get at study hall, and I'm really unsure how we're presenting anything in a nonpartisan manner. I brought some of this to the attention of the principal last year, but there's no way that I can stay on top of it all. When the Iowa Standard published scenes from an eighth-grade classroom in Dubuque, I was appalled. When I asked my daughter if she had seen the room and what her thoughts were, she told me that her art teacher has a pride flag so students know her classroom is an inclusive space. While that's a truly beautiful sentiment, I asked if she would feel comfortable wearing her T-shirt from a pro-life rally or, God forbid, her dad's Make America Great Again hat there. She said, and I quote absolutely not, "People would think that I'm a bad person." In our home, we discuss partisan and nonpartisan issues. I believe that playing devil's advocate with my children, even when their beliefs align with my own, helps them develop better critical thinking skills. They know no matter what they choose to believe, their father and I will support them so long as they can make a cogent argument as to how they drew their conclusions. Policy 6207 is on your agenda today to expand the political activities to include a section on academic freedom. The policy leaves too much up to the discretion of the individual and what their belief is appropriate during the time. When we already have students that feel that they have to censor themselves, be silent about their beliefs, and diminish their shine to be accepted by peers and faculty, how will this policy be upheld? Are the students going to be allowed to film their teachers if they feel a topic crosses the line? Why ever is there a need for a political philosophy discussion alongside the Pythagorean theorem, Iambic pentameter, or Newton's laws of motion? During government debate or composition on a persuasive essay, that's entirely possible, but there needs to be more clarity on what's acceptable and when. As I always tell my kids, it can take a lifetime to build trust, but only a second to lose it. Right now, I don't think that there is trust between many of the parents and the faculty for this sort of open-ended policy. I'd ask that the Board table the vote pending clarification of the contents.
When I'm finished with my three minutes, I hope I don't take it all, I have an online petition that I'd like to submit to the Board. It's a pro-mask petition and however cannot be compared to the petition that you received.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sherry Flat.
Thank you.
The reason why this isn't comparable to the other petition, why it's different, this petition is limited to the Dubuque Community School District only. The petition you received before, and I've read it, covers the whole Dubuque County schools, whatever that is. I'm not even sure what that is. But it led me to believe that it's not just the Dubuque Community School District, and this is. While obtaining signatures for the hard copy, most of it was done online. I intentionally went to diverse events so that I was talking to different audiences. For instance, I went to the farmer's market and stayed all last Saturday. I went to a music concert. There were a lot of people at the farmer's market from Chicago last weekend. They were not allowed to sign the petition, but they would have gladly done so. One of the reasons I'm here to talk to you today is because I've tried to listen to the worries on both sides of this issue. The mental health of our community must be a priority. I believe that. Parents, grandparents, doctors, nurses, teachers, administrators, businesses, large and small, profit and nonprofit organizations must all play a role in keeping our community mentally healthy. All of these people deal with mask issues every day in their lives, not just our kids at school. This is not a game with the usual winners and losers. No one wants to wear a mask. It's not an issue, however, that I believe allows compromise. There's no sitting on the fence with this one. Why? Because it's life versus death. And that's why I'm here. My silence, if I stayed at home, would mean complicity in something I truly believe I need to speak up about. While I share the mental health worry with everyone, there's a much larger problem that's a part of it. If we don't require the protection of masks, lives can and probably will be lost. They already have been in Dubuque. I've lost three people to COVID, three. My husband has cancer, stage IV lung cancer. Most of you know someone in this room that has some life-threatening disease that they need to be protected from. As a community with healthy mental health, we must help to protect each other. The only way masks are successful is if we all wear them. Of course, there are exceptions. My husband wears a mask. Is that my three minutes?
That's just three minutes. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, okay. I will present this to you after.
You can bring it up and give it to him.
I'll give it to her, okay.
We should hear from someone who is against the mask.
Hello, my name is Dan Kiefer. I have three kids in Dubuque Community School District as of right now. They would like to express their experiences and viewpoints on wearing muzzles. Oops, sorry, masks.
Hi, our names are Kenzie. Our names are Ashlyn, Lane, and I'm Kenzie Kiefer. Lane and I are from Jefferson Middle School and Ashlyn is from St. Joe Elementary. Lane is 13 and I'm 11. Ashlyn is nine. We believe that wearing a mask affects learning in a bad way. It's a better learning experience without masks because kids can focus better. Kids can focus better without the mask because...
First, the masks are uncomfortable. They are always rubbing up against your face. I personally am readjusting my mask constantly, and then I cannot focus on the work that I must do. I know some of you know this. You shouldn't touch your mask a whole lot, but I found myself and other kids readjusting their mask a ton. Just think about the kids that have asthma during PE. I had to wear a mask during gym once, and it was not fun. I could barely breathe. Also, most children refuse to wear masks properly. Last year, my teacher reminded kids like a million times to put their mask on correctly. It was extremely annoying and distracting.
For kids who also have to wear glasses, their glasses fog up, making it hard to see what's going on. It is hard for them to read and write when they can't see what they're doing. When kids could take off their mask, we could actually see our teachers and friends. Also, we could hear better and we didn't hear the muffled voices of our friends. I can actually read people's faces and expressions. Next, we didn't have to yell across the room so people could hear us.
When you eat lunch, your mask will get dirty because how many kids actually wipe their face after lunch? So then kids got to school with a dirty mask. They usually forget to tell their parents to wash their mask for school. Also, kids have to remember their mask or they are stuck wearing paper masks, and paper masks are really uncomfortable.
It also confuses me. If members of the school board think we should wear masks, why aren't most of you wearing one? Therefore, you think that we shouldn't wear masks at school.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Tyler. I have five children that attend the Dubuque Community School District. I'm also a board-certified family nurse practitioner. I work in the hospital and have dealt with COVID since the beginning. My hope is that you tackle this problem no differently than if you needed a new roof or if you needed a new HVAC system. You would talk to the experts in the field. The CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Board of Health in our community all recommend universal masking in schools during periods of high community transmission. I'd also like to respond to Mr. Rogan's statement at the October 4th Board meeting, quoted in the THS saying, "Of 1,488 students notified of significant exposure to COVID, only seven later tested positive." But what we weren't told is how many of those were tested. Without that common denominator, we really don't have anything. We know that many children have mild or no symptoms at all. This type of information is misleading and it leads to misinformed decisions. Your job is to protect the health and safety of the students and employees of the Dubuque Community School District. As you contemplate your decision tonight, you need to ask yourself if you are more worried about public opinion than you are about the safety of the students and the employees you represent because the experts in this field have been overwhelmingly clear on what needs to be done. Are you prepared to come face to face with a parent of a child that has a bad outcome from COVID knowing you didn't follow the expertise and guidance of the leading health organizations to do everything to protect our children? The bottom line is this is an easy decision if you take away the emotional, non-scientific, anti-masking rhetoric and you follow the evidence-based guidelines in this field. The list of reasons one can make to not wear a mask is endless. Simply Google it and you are inundated with largely unscientific misinformation. That being said, the only reason epidemiologists, scientists, and healthcare providers are endorsing them is because they save lives. It's not 100% effective, but what is? If it decreases the spread and it helps us out of this pandemic, isn't it worth it? If it saves one life, if it decreases the suffering of just one person, isn't it worth it? Thank you.
Hi, Amy Ball. I have two kids in the school district. I did send an email earlier and it is not only the... It is not the school board's job to tell myself or my children what to do medically or to force unnecessary medical devices. The schools don't even send children home from school anymore when a child has lice to not return until the lice is gone. The schools just let the child stay with lice in school and continue to attend school with lice, and all you do is send a generic paper home letting parents know that there is lice at the school. Lice can lead into major medical problems if not treated, and it can also turn into body lice, not just head lice. But the schools and the school board doesn't seem to care about the health of our children when it comes to that. Now, with COVID, all you want to do is act so concerned about the health of our children. It is the choice of the parents to make their child or children wear a mask if they want them to, not yours. You and your so-called attorneys using the ADA as an excuse to make everyone wear a medical device goes against the ADA 100%, and I did send the attachment to you in this email. It is your job to accommodate the child or children with the disabilities, the same education, not forcing everyone else to accommodate to them. It is your job to accommodate to their specific individual needs, not the rest of the students to accommodate to them. If you decide to use the ADA as an excuse to make the children wear masks... Sorry. Because of the very few, then I want the same in return for my child. My child has an IEP, so I want the rest of the school and her class to follow her IEP 100% to make it fair learning. It's not fair that she has to follow an IEP and the others don't. If this request is not followed, I will contact the ADA and I will seek legal action. I will not sit and let you, as a school board, favor one disability over another. You and your so-called attorneys know this. I, myself, have disabilities that prohibit me from wearing a mask. They do exist, and my doctor has said that. I have my rights also to come to the school if need be and to be let inside without a mask to take care of my children if need be. Also, if you are so concerned about the health of our children, then your school nurses should also start listening and send children home if they have a fever that was pre-COVID.
My name is Chris Stoll. I'm a resident of Dubuque and I have an eighth grader at Washington Middle School. According to the numbers at 3:30 today, 43 students have tested positive for COVID. Out of 10,300, that's 0.4%. That is not an issue, okay? This is never going to go away, and this is... I had COVID. I was in ICU for six days a year ago. I followed the advice of my doctor, and that's a decision between him and I. I have the antibodies. Everybody in my family has had COVID. We all have the antibodies. If you think the masks that our students are wearing when they start the day are good by the end of the day, you're mistaken. If they're not changing those masks every, at least every hour, they're ineffective. I just... My question to the Board is, we have 0.4% of students that have this. What is the number where you want to say, "We won't mandate it"? What's the number? Because 0.4% is ridiculous that we want to mandate masks, okay? COVID will... It's always going to be around us. It's going to be here always, okay? But we don't do it for the flu. We shouldn't do it for COVID. That's all I have to say.
My name is Steve Roseall. I live in Dubuque, actually in the city of Dubuque, which is in the Dubuque Community School District. A couple weeks ago, I thanked you for your service. I do continue to thank you for your service. And to follow up on the gentleman who spoke before me, I'll ask you a rhetorical question, which is, some of you have dodged this issue, and it's a dodge, to say that, well, we don't have the data. We don't have the numbers. How many children, percentage-wise, in this school district, in your minds, are required to get sick? How many raw number of children are required to get sick? How many staff need to get sick and die before you engage in common sense, minimal mitigation that has been recommended by medical experts? That has been recommended by our own county Board of Health. With all due respect to all of you, you're not medical experts. I'm not a medical expert. That's why when I go, when I have a health issue, I ask medical experts. I listened at the auditorium, as you opined, about the legal outcome of this. And with all due respect, you're not lawyers either. I am an attorney. And when people have a legal question, they come to me. That's why I rely upon experts. I don't rely upon anecdotal evidence. I don't say, well, this has been politicized, so I'm not going to take a position, so I'm going to dodge this. I don't say that there's science on both sides of this and that this is a matter of choice because I don't have the choice as an American to hurt other people. And I care enough about my community and I care enough about those to say that, well, if it's 0.4%, assuming that that dashboard is correct, which I don't believe that it is, as a spouse of a school district employee, is, as a spouse of a, of a school district employee, I think that those 0.4% are worth protecting. I think that just because you say that the issue is politicized, just because one side is louder than the other, is not a reason to dodge your responsibility and to take care of the students, the staff, and our community by extension. I encourage you to do exactly what our Board of Health has recommended and require that people wear masks until we are no longer in a situation of high community spread. Thank you.
My name is John Markham. I live on Geraldine Drive. And I know you look at me, you probably think, "What's this old guy got a dog in a fight for?" I happen to have four kids in the system, grandkids in the system, and two more coming next year. We've got twins coming in next year. I did kind of an unscientific study the other day. I had to pick one of the grandkids up at Roosevelt, and it was after school hours, so there wasn't a lot of kids around, but I watched all of them that come out the building, and there were probably 50 or 60 kids that walked by me. One had a mask on, one of 50. Now, to me, that tells me something. Parents are saying, "We're not going to make them wear masks, nor should you." The, uh, I served eight years on the Dubuque City Council, and I'll give you a little lesson that I learned early in my tenure on the council, and that was, when we got off-base, we were quickly notified that we were off-base. And I think this is a topic that, if you mandate masks, you are clearly off-base. So I would say, no mask.
We have had, we, we can have one more speaker that would be in favor of masks to make it a fair thing? Is there, if not, we can have, okay, if you would like to speak, you may go ahead and speak.
Hi, I'm Chloe Goder in 7th grade at Roosevelt, and I'm here to speak against mask mandate. You should, it should be an individual choice to wear a mask. If you want to wear a mask, that is your choice. If you don't, you should not be forced to. Personally, I get migraines, shortness of breath, and dizziness when I have a mask on, and I've heard the same from others. In the year of 2020, I got COVID-19 from, with a mask on and following COVID-19 guidelines. This year, I have not got COVID-19 with no mask on. Also, I feel that it will take more time away from learning for teachers to give reminders and mask breaks out of the day. That is why I think this, it should be your choice. Thank you.
Okay, our 30 minutes are up, so I need a motion, please.
I move that Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We do have a motion here. Carrie, do we need to say a motion to go into open business, old business?
Yes, that, uh...
For, for a discussion?
For discussion.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education have board discussion and possible action regarding masks.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education have board discussion and possible action regarding masks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. One of the topics, topics that has come up with the board, just a question, and we would like to ask Superintendent Rheingans, is what other districts have done, other than just a full mask mandate, and then not, with that, and one of them that has come to light was what Waterloo, Cedar Falls is doing on a per-building basis? And if you can share some information that you've learned in speaking with that district?
Yeah, absolutely. So I have a lot of the same data points, and I'm going to share them all unless there are questions, and we all know there are pros and cons to those data points and the accuracy, and they're the best that they can be into the data that's collected. Mike, could you put up the slide of what other, another district? So we had a meeting last Monday, a support services meeting, and the board discussed many of these issues, and a question came up about this. So did some research. There are three districts that we know of, doesn't mean there are only three, but three that we know of, who are doing something with a mask mandate that is not a full mask mandate. There are about 24, 27 districts in the state who have a mask mandate. Some it's a K-12 mask mandate, some it's a K-6 mask mandate, and then there are three, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and Mason City, that have a mask mandate based on data. And that was the question that the board had. So in Cedar Falls and Waterloo, they developed their plan jointly, and both school districts announced that plan at the same time. They look at each school and their dashboard. Again, the dashboard is a dashboard, and they require masks at the point at which a school reaches 3%. So as mentioned tonight, as a district right now, we're significantly underneath that. But at 3%, students are required to wear masks until such a point that they drop back below 3% or a week. They reevaluate theirs on a week-by-week basis because they don't do a daily dashboard the way that Dubuque does. The other is Mason City, and then they require a mask mandate if, for any reason, they get to 7%. So theirs isn't COVID-specific. So if they have students out for any, any reason, and they reach 7%, so the top two focus that work on COVID in Mason City bases there on 7% illness. Just as a qualifier, we are required to report to the county and the state when we reach 10% absentee illness. So that kind of puts it into perspective. I was asked what data point did they use? I spoke with the superintendent in Waterloo earlier this afternoon. Really, they looked at that 10%, talked to, you know, a variety of folks, and landed on, on 3%, and they've been in that model now, I believe, for four weeks. Same with Cedar Falls, same timeline.
Any questions?
So at either one of these schools, Waterloo or Cedar Falls, have they exceeded their 3% at all?
Cedar Falls, I do not believe has. Waterloo has had two elementary schools two weeks ago that did. They masked for a week, and then they didn't. In the last two weeks, they have not. They release their update every Friday at 1:30. So, you know, we'll know, I guess, this Friday at 1:30 what their plan would be for the next week.
Have you, have you chatted with the superintendents or the leadership at all there to get a feel for how
Yeah, I know the superintendent's
that particular model has been received?
I think that, that, you know, in my conversation with Jane Lindeman, the superintendent in Waterloo this afternoon, I think there is a, a pretty good acceptance of the model in the sense that it has a tripwire, if you will, to use, I guess, a military term. When, when things are starting to go bad, there's a, there is a process by which masks are added. And then, when buildings have zero, you know, low, low cases, then they're not wearing masks. And so her opinion, and I suppose if you talk to the community, you can get a variety of opinions, but her opinion was that that has served them well to this point.
Well, I know for me, and I've, I've read this right here multiple times, I know we didn't get a chance to talk about it last week. I believe Wisconsin is doing something similar that was on the papers Friday. And for me, this is kind of the middle ground for me, and I, I like it that it still provides the choice for families, and if it does get to a certain percentage, it's only temporary. And so families, there's still hope. And so I would support and would love to entertain a conversation on this, but I don't want to take up all the airspace. But I do love this model and this example right here.
I'm going to jump in, because I don't disagree about this model being a potential option for us to, to think about, but given some of the concerns that folks have identified and that we've talked about with our numbers and the limiting with testing, I feel like there's more that we should try to do as soon as we can. And so I have a motion. I move that the Board of Education issue a mandatory mask mandate for all students, staff, and visitors in the Dubuque Community School District in grades pre-K through 6 during regular school hours effective October 13, 2021, and remaining in place until vaccinations are readily available locally for children under 12 and/or community spread or until community spread in Dubuque County is below the substantial level, whichever comes first.
Second of all. It has been moved and seconded for K, pre-K through 6 mask mandate. We are now open for discussion.
I can see, I'll just chime in a little bit here. I can see a lot of validity to this, being that our elementary kids age under 12 have not been vaccinated. And to me, vaccines are a big thing as far as protection for any flare-up of transmission of viruses in the future. I know this does put a burden upon the elementary schools as opposed to our secondary schools, and I know the plans that Waterloo and Cedar Falls had only applied to the elementary. Am I correct?
Waterloo and Cedar Falls, correct, and the
Mason City didn't specify
Mason City is K-12.
So in their secondary schools, they, they let it go, right?
They only apply that plan to their elementary, correct.
So I can see from, from that perspective, the vaccine perspective, there is some validity to this motion.
I'd like to speak in favor of the motion, and in fact, ask, I guess, a point of personal privilege to read a prepared statement that actually fits well, I think, with your motion, Ms. Parks. I share this statement with you this evening because, both in support of this motion and as an explanation of my rationale for supporting a mask mandate. Our world, country, state, community, and this entire school district have been brought through so much with this pandemic. COVID-19 and its variants have thrown our society into chaos, fear, confusion, dissension, and mistrust. Here we are this evening, again, wrestling as a Board of Education with what is most right, to keep this community's public education students, approximately 10,300 in number, their families, our district faculty and staff, which is approximately 2,000, at the lowest risk possible and as, and as safe as we're able to keep them. I know that values and beliefs differ on how to do that. When is our action too much? When is it too little? I've read every scientific study and report that I've been able to find myself, plus those I have been sent by the community, by parents, by other board members. It seems to me that the most credible and reliable scientific research and medical expert opinion is consistent and strong regarding the importance of wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands, and other sterilization mitigations. We teach science in this district to all of our students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. It seems both ironic and unconscionable that we would ignore the great preponderance of scientific evidence on safety and lowering virus transmission risk. I know that some of my board colleagues believe strongly that our school district's positivity data, as reported on our district website's dashboard, does not support a mask requirement at this time. While I'm not a data expert, I have studied research and data in my graduate school studies and worked extensively with data methodology and reporting throughout my career in education. When data is incomplete and only represents part of the factual reality, as does ours, it should absolutely not be used as a basis for decision-making. Our district's dashboard data, while it is all that we're allowed to collect by Iowa law, is based on an honor system, with no required testing, no required quarantine if exposed to COVID-19, and no required port, reporting of in-home testing. Numbers reported on the district's dashboard simply do not represent the high level of spread in our community and increased numbers of hospitalizations in Dubuque County. It simply means that Dubuque's levels of testing are inadequate. It represents only a portion of the actual positive cases that are present in our classrooms and in our schools. I should not, and I will not, consider such data an appropriate basis for my decision-making relative to our students' and our staff's safety. Literally, hundreds of concerned parents and members of this community have reached out to me, and I'm sure to other members of the Board of Education. I'm grateful for each of those communications. Many of them do not agree with my position. It's a daunting task to respond to all of them, but I'm in the process doing, of doing that, and I'm very grateful to live in a community that values education as much as Dubuque does, and where our students' parent, our students' parents and other citizens are willing to reach out with their suggestions, concerns, and personal stories. Thank you to each of you. As an elected member of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, I feel strongly and urgently responsible for and desire to do everything that is legal, legally possible to protect our students, their families, and our excellent faculty and staff. That happens child by child, adult by adult, but that means that we must keep the aggregate of all persons in our schools at lowest possible risk and with appropriate precautions and preventions in place. When one is exposed or preventably vulnerable, all are at greater risk. Why would we risk any of our children or our staff members? That brings me to the law in Iowa. After reading three legal opinions our district has received on the issue of masking in light of the judge's two latest actions regarding Iowa's earlier mask ban legislation, my understanding of all three of those legal advisers' advice to this board is that we violate two major pieces of federal legislation if we do not provide FAP for each and every child. FAP is a free and appropriate public education for all children. Many parents have contacted me, as well as other board members, because they believe that their medically vulnerable children cannot be in the great risk of an unvaccinated and unmasked school setting. That tells me that we have children who are unable to receive in-person learning because we have not done everything in our power for all children to provide them with a lower risk of exposure to the virus because we do not require everyone to wear masks. What we know is that masks have been proven to prevent transmission of the virus. Five to 11-year-old children cannot yet access the vaccine. So until the vaccine is widely and readily available to the 5,400 children in our district at grades PK, pre-kindergarten through 6th grade, I strongly believe it is our responsibility to reduce the risk of this serious illness and, to the greatest extent possible, prevent, further prevent the spread of the virus among this student population by requiring masks for all students, staff members, and school visitors in grades pre-kindergarten through 6. I share with you that I received, the last email I received today, that I'm aware of, was a very interesting one for me, and I share just a piece of it with you. Quote, "Dubuque County continues to be at a high level of community transmission of the virus. The city of Dubuque has a 13.33% positivity rate today, October 11, 2021. 26% of Dubuque County's positive tests in the last seven days have been in the 0- to 17-year-old age group. The test positivity in the 0- to 17 age group continues to increase and has had the highest number of positive tests for weeks now. The long-term COVID effects of COVID-19 on children are still largely unknown. Issuing a mask mandate could prevent unknown numbers of children from suffering from possible long-term multi-organ effects affecting many, if not all, body systems, including heart, lung, kidney, skin, and brain functions. Long-term COVID symptoms have been found in children whose COVID cases were both symptomatic and asymptomatic. Schools in Ames, Ankeny, Boone, Burlington, Cedar Rapids, Council Bluffs, Davenport, Des Moines, Iowa City, Lynnmar, Marshalltown, Johnston, Urbandale, and West Des Moines are now mandating masks to protect students. We need them to join now to protect the students in Dubuque County School District." End of quotation. So, "These 5,400 students and their teachers and other educational support staff in grades pre-kindergarten through 6th grade need and deserve to be protected in every way we have available to us as board members. I am left only able to, at a minimum, support a decision to require mask wearing until the potential spread of the virus greatly lowers in this community and/or until the five to 11-year-old children in Dubuque have the option and ready availability of the vaccine. For me, it is unconscionable to do otherwise." Thank you for indulging this point of personal privilege, Madam Chairperson.
I got a comment, too. And so I, I shared this last week when we all talked from the heart, and I shared, so I'm in a new position with the city of Dubuque focusing on poverty and neighborhood support. And I grew up in poverty all my life, right? And when I say poor, we were so poor, my mother couldn't even afford to come watch me graduate from college. There was no food, no electricity. The struggle was real for my household. The struggle was real for my household, so think about that. For me, growing up in poverty, that was normal. What kids are dealing with now, we call that trauma. And so, when we look at the data, and I remember talking to the city manager about this position, and we did a study for someone to come in this community and tell us about poverty. And I remember sitting down with the city manager, and my emotions was everywhere. And I said, "Why are we doing this? This doesn't make no sense. I can tell you about poverty. That is my life. I marinate in this community where poverty is increasing constantly, right? Where people don't want to go, I go." And I remember, if you ever met the city manager, he was so calm. He looked at me, he put his glasses down. He says, "Anderson, you probably can tell me about poverty, but unless I have that data, it's going to be hard to convince the policymakers or the citizens that it's important." I believe in science, all right? I know we teach science. I appreciate everything health experts do, and I think it's kind of a false narrative when people speak and say, "You guys don't believe in the science." No, we do. But we also teach math in school as well and other activities that tries to help our students reach their full potential. The data is just not there for our students. And that is, and I, please don't clap, please don't clap. That's just honest math right there. And that's me taking my emotions out of it, right? Originally, I wanted to do something for the younger kids based on my emotions and accessibility and equity. But again, the data is not there. And so, I strongly encourage all of us to find common ground and to look at what Cedar Falls and Waterloo is doing because, again, I talk to parents not only in the grocery stores, on social media, everywhere. They're losing hope right now because they believe something is going to be forced on them. I talk to teachers and parents from both sides who feel like, right now, their child is suffering mentally. And we talk about the physical, but we're excluding that data because there's more to the data than we talk about. There's kids and families who are suffering mentally on this, right? So what's going on in Waterloo and Cedar Falls? That is something temporary that everyone can say, "Okay, there's hope." And right now, more than ever, regardless of what people say in here, people need hope right now, and we should be the ones to give them that, all right? And so, for me, I can't support that because of the data, but I strongly hope we all can agree on that temporary requirement if it gets to a certain level. That's just my thoughts.
I would like to thank everyone for coming in tonight and speaking, especially those young students that get up. That was pretty brave of you guys. I feel like what we're trying to teach these students is evident that they're listening. Students today are visual and digital learners. They must be critical thinkers in real-life situations. Today's teaching method uses continuum, the approach where a learner deciphers with new information and situations using critical thinking. So mandates go against current methods of teaching in the 21st century. This is why I'm not going to tell parents or students what to do. They need to exercise their own critical thinking to make their choices.
So, you know, I made the motion, so I want to just speak for my rationale, my reasoning for doing it. And I echo what Lisa said. I mean, I appreciate that folks have shared a lot of information with us. And I've received a lot of emails from folks who aren't in this room and weren't in the room last time we had a meeting, who, like Anderson mentioned, are losing hope because they feel like their students don't have access to education in person right now because there's not a mask mandate. And that's at the crux of what's going on with the ADA and with faith. And we can't pretend like those kids aren't being impacted by this. The reason the ADA exists as a law is because there's a need to make sure that people who, you know, would be subject to it have their rights met and that they have access to things that they deserve. And, you know, I guess, so I agree with Anderson that people need hope, but I think that's on both sides. Like, I think people really are looking for some guidance from us, and that's why we're in this position right now tonight. To me, a middle ground between, you know, parents deciding, which kind of means there's not a lot of mask-wearing, to a full mask mandate, which is where we were three weeks ago, is this, is where it's like, at least temporarily providing an option for kids who can't have access to a vaccine. And once we see that they do, once they have it readily available, that changes the situation, or it potentially could change the situation for us. But in the meantime, I feel strongly that going against CDC recommendations, Board of Health recommendations, for the, one of the small things that we can do to help kids, it's really, we're returning to a standard that's being used in many states across the country. It's being used in 80% of urban districts in Iowa. It was what we were using last year as a district. And while there are legitimate reasons to be concerned about mask-wearing, and you've mentioned some of them, folks have brought them up here, like, I have confidence in our district team that they can accommodate and meet what needs to happen because they've already done it. They were amazing last year and nimble in trying to make sure students got an education despite all of the stress that we were dealing with living through this pandemic. And I think that they can keep doing it going forward. From my own experience, the reason why, you know, our dashboard right now is an imperfect tool ties back to what Nancy said about the level of testing. My daughter, last week, was exposed by a friend of hers at school. We tried to get a rapid test in Dubuque so that we would know if she was positive before we sent her to school because that felt like the responsible option if we could do it. I drove all over town for an hour trying to find a rapid test for her, and I couldn't. I couldn't get her in to see our doctor because she was asymptomatic, which doesn't mean she couldn't still be spreading it if she saw her friends the next day. I was able to finally get a test because a friend gave one to us. But our other option would have been to, I mean, we had some of the spit tests from the state, so our other option is to have her do that and send it back and wait and keep her home until she, we knew she was okay and safe to go to school. We could have made that work if we had to, but I know for a lot of people, that's not an easy option. It's not an easy option to decide to miss work. It's not an easy option to keep your kid out of school for several days because you're concerned about what they learn. And all of that is just to share that testing is challenging right now in the community. It's not easy to get a rapid test. It's not easy to make the best choice because you can't get the right information. And that information is all that we have to go into the dashboard at this point. So if a lot of folks are in this kind of a pickle and are struggling to get a test or just can't find one or decide not to go through the hassle, then that's going to impact what we know and what we get reported on that dashboard. So I know it's maybe, you know, not the hope of people in this room, but it is the hope of a lot of folks that have been contacting me via email and social media and out at the grocery store, that they want us to do something. They find it to be our responsibility to do something to make sure our kids are protected when they're in school, and this is one measure that we could do right now.
I'd like to just chime in. I think that we need to do something, and I think we need to initially hear a vote on Kate's motion and just move on from there and see what other options we have after that.
Well, I want to remind everybody, this is from the CDC website. This is from the CDC. There have been 478 deaths to children under the age of 18 since the beginning of COVID, with an estimated of 30 to 55 million COVID infections. So the throw-out of fear of death in the city of Dubuque is not a fair statement to say. If we want to be fear of death of our students, we need to be worried about suicide, drug overdose, car accidents. Please stop, please. There have been zero deaths between the ages of 0 and 30 in Dubuque County because of COVID. And, you know, everybody keeps saying, "No, I don't want a student to die," but the risk and the severity of COVID for students, especially the lower grades, is not as severe as it is for elderly adults. That has been steady all the way through. And so, to keep throwing this threat of death on us is so out of reach because there are so many things that we are not in control of risk. That is not what we are here for. We cannot manage risks. Students are not in school the majority of the time. We talk about that, of how much we can't control of students because of the educational outcomes they have. Same thing with their health outcomes. We are not in control of that. Kids are out in the public without their masks on. If they're playing with their friends, they might have a mask on at school, but are we guaranteeing if you're with your friend, you're wearing a mask when you're playing with your friend outside of school? We can't control that. And to think that it's going to have any difference of wearing a mask, especially the impact of masks on children of that age because they are touching their face, it is not going to cause, it's going to be more of a hassle and for teachers to have to worry about that and kids to get stressed out about that and the mental impact. I cannot support something like this.
Any other comments from board members?
Yeah, I would just share a couple of things. Last meeting, I abstained on both votes. Let me explain that just a little bit. So, an abstention does, in spite of what one of our speakers said tonight, an abstention is not ducking an issue. An abstention means that you're not going to show support either way on an issue. So in this particular situation, and I'll explain more, I can't support an issue like this that's been politicized and that has winners and losers, primarily because, and it's important for people to understand this because most people don't follow the school board that closely. So I've served on the school board twice, two terms per shot. 2001 through '06, chose to not run. Ran unopposed twice, chose to not run again. Thought I was done. Came back in 2011, ran again, got reelected, two terms. 2019, came off, thought I was done. Steve Poles is here tonight. You know, Steve would be the first guy who can tell you, "I'm not afraid to be the one in a 6-1 vote. I don't back down from anything that's tough." But what I do have a sense of is proper process. So the reason I'm here tonight on the school board, any one of you lucky dogs could be the one sitting up here, too. There was, Mike Donahue left the community. And so, when Mike left the community, there was an open seat on the board, and nobody applied for it. So they asked me if I would fill that seat for just a few months. I said, "Well, what's stirring out there? Are there going to be any holy wars?" Nope. Smooth sailing. Smooth sailing, I was told. And so, and they needed somebody, or because of the duration of how long the seat would be open, we would be out of compliance with the state. So I said, "Okay, I will come back and serve on the school board." But I think it's, but I said, "Number one, I don't think it's appropriate for somebody who was not chosen by the citizens to vote on any motions where they would be perceived winners and losers. I just don't think that's right. Number two, I explained right away, I'm not going to run for reelection. I'm here to just fill a seat, and that's it." So essentially, it's really bad form for my value system to show up, not chosen by the citizens, vote on a hot topic, and sail off into the sunset. That doesn't fly with me. So I want people to understand the abstention. Now, with this particular motion, once again, I perceive that we're going to have a bunch of losers on the issue because you have, we essentially have elementary students, now, these are numbers from Thursday that I jotted down, but four schools have zero cases. Five schools, I think, have had one case on, and Thursday is Friday because there was no school Friday. Five schools had one, and four schools had two cases. Those are elementary schools. Middle schools were 2-2 and 1. I mean, essentially, what we're doing is we're not giving any choice to a large portion of the community that really does not feel comfortable with their kids having masks. Now, a couple of other things. So I understand, I've heard it discussed, a couple of people pointed out, the legal advice to the district, which is, "Got to stay in compliance with ADA," okay? I get that, big fan of the law. We have to do what we have to do. But let's keep in mind, there are 320 school districts in the state of Iowa-ish, right? Stand about 320.
327, I think.
327. 300 of them or more do not have a mask mandate. So whether you're from a smaller district or a bigger district, all 327 of those districts are there to protect their school district. And for some reason, 300 of them have somehow gotten legal advice that says it's okay to not have a mask mandate. So that's one thing that hits me. Something I brought up at the committee meeting a week ago, as far as percentages go, percentages of younger people having the virus, 97,000 citizens in Dubuque County. We haven't even talked about the fact that West Dubuque hasn't even weighed in on this yet, right? I don't think West Dubuque has said a word about this. That's an issue that at some point, I would hope our media would ask, "What the hell is going on out there?" So, that's a fair question. So 15,000 of our 97,000 citizens in Dubuque County have been diagnosed with COVID. Now, the CDC, best as I know, for every one person that has COVID, another five people have had COVID and not known it, okay? So that's 75,000, plus the 15 that had it is 90,000. We have 60-ish thousand people that are fully vaccinated. I mean, at some point, I keep hearing about, "Trust the science," and I heard immunity, heard immunity, heard immunity. When you have that many adults that have been, either had it or are protected from it, all that leaves is kids. So the percentage of kids has no choice but to go out. So I think that's important for us to keep in mind here. But again, so an abstention is different than a no vote. An abstention, you only need one vote to overtake an abstention, which is important to know. But, you know, an abstention doesn't help get to four votes. So that's where I'm at. What would I vote on? What would make me feel that I'm not being sucked into a holy war and there's science and we're not? One of the things I keep hearing loud and clear from the emails that I get from people is that my kid with a mask really has a problem, mentally, physically, whatever it might be. I've had numerous people quote Iowa City and Des Moines, the holy grail for masks, right? You want to talk about bad form. Two hours after it was legal to have a mask mandate with no public input, the city of Des Moines implemented a mask mandate. That is bad form. I keep hearing about Iowa City. Mask mandate in the Iowa City schools, mask mandate in the city of Iowa City, as evidenced by all the people wandering around Kinnick Stadium wearing masks on Sunday. And I'm telling you, it's, not all of the students in the Iowa City School District are wearing masks. 10 or 11%, I think I heard from somebody, are not wearing masks there because of exemptions, because of mental health, because of physical health, because of religious beliefs, whatever it may be. So there are exemptions out there. So as I think about what I would support, it would be more along the lines of the Waterloo-Cedar Falls model, be as long as parents are made well-aware of exemptions. And I think what that does is take personalities out of the mix. It takes the fear of government, big government, trying to ram something down people's throats out of the mix, and it seems more reasonable to me. So that's something I would entertain. But in the absence of those particular things, I am going to abstain from voting in favor of this.
All right. We've heard from all board members on this proposal. Again, Kate's motion was for a pre-K6 mask mandate. Can you read the rest of that, please?
Sure. "During the regular school hours effective October 13, 2021, and remaining in place until vaccinations are readily available locally for children under 12 and/or community spread in Dubuque County is below the substantial level, whichever comes first."
All right. Roll call vote, please. Bradley?
Aye.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohaska?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Sancy?
No.
Whitman?
No.
Barton?
Abstained.
That motion fails. Go ahead.
I was fully prepared to move on, to make a different motion in the event that this motion we just voted on did not pass. And hearing everybody's statements, even Stan's presentation, Anderson's statements, Tom's statements, I'd like to be somewhat proactive in trying to keep this under control, not as much Not as much reactive to situations that occur. And, but I think we need to do something. And that common ground that you alluded to, Anderson, is somewhere we need to do something for our community. And I am, at this point, being that the original motion failed, at this point, I am in favor of moving towards some type of model, some type of...
What's your motion?
I have a motion written right here and I'll, I'll read it, okay? Uh, I move, and I don't know about the dates here for sure, but I, I move that effective Monday, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, that the Dubuque Community School District utilize the district's dash, dashboard data to determine that a mask mandate be in effect for all employees, students, parents and visitors in any Dubuque Community School District building when the positivity rate is a two percent or higher in the building. That is subject to debate, I suppose. This mandate will last five calendar days after the positivity rate is reached. Any outdoor activities, including student recess or classes and indoor activities such as lunch and recess that occur in large areas where distancing can be maintained, is excluded. Okay, we need to maybe discuss the motion.
Wait, no, we need a, we need a second.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded.
You can read this right now. Yeah.
To have a two percent order. Dubuque. That they utilize the district dashboard data to determine a mask mandate for all employees, students, parents and visitors in any building with the positivity rate of two percent or higher. And it will last for five calendar days after the two percent positivity rate is reached. Any outdoor activities, including student recess or classes or indoor activities such as lunch recess that occur in a large area where distancing can be maintained are excluded. Discussion.
Yeah, so for me, with my motion, I, I was thinking more with Cedar Falls and Waterloo at that three percent specifically and allowing our superintendent to work with our health specialists on anything else that needed to be adjusted. And so I would just say if we can just make it a three percent, I would feel comfortable on that. And only, and only the three percent and only that building. So if it, it's, it's choice right now, it's choice right now. And if it reaches three percent, then it would go to a temporary mask requirement. And so that's what, that's what I believe and that's my support.
And I know I'm interrupting, but you, but you've made the rules and we have tolerated an awful lot from people back here. We need to either follow your rules or ask them to leave.
We ask everybody to please stop from making comments and responding. Please, so we can have this discussion, please.
My question was, do we, do we have a sense, maybe you said this before Stan, of where the three percent number came from for those districts that chose this option?
I think they looked at the ten percent for normal, uh, issues. Um, and then they consulted, we've been talking with Superintendent Waterloo. They talked to some of the local folks on their county Board of Health. I don't wanna speak for Waterloo, that's why I'm a little hesitant, but they, they did have conversations around that. And they developed this plan based on input from local experts, I guess.
Okay, thanks.
One of my concerns about shifting, oh, Lisa, go ahead.
No, go ahead, you started.
Uh, one of my concerns about your notion, Anderson, of shifting to a three percent lies in the, I'll say inadequacy of our district dashboard data. And that sounds critical, I don't mean it to be critical. But it is in fact that our, we have, we do not have a testing program that can be required of students. We, if parents do have home tests, they're not required to report the results of the test. Kate has reported on how difficult it is to get a rapid test. And so the combination of things, the unavailability of testing, our lack of ability to require testing and reporting of test data, leaves me feeling, as I said in my prepared statement, it leaves me feeling very inadequate about the data on which we would base a further action of protection. For me, the, the role of the Board of Education, Ms. Ryan, you, you talk about preventing death or we, we talk about preventing death. Death is at the extreme end of that continuum. But we have children and a staff, a large number of children, a large number of staff members, who are at the mercy of our prevention, at the mercy of our risk reduction. And I believe that is the role of this Board of Education, that we in fact have a responsibility to our students, to our staff, to minimize risk, maximize prevention and precaution and thereby allow for teaching and learning to happen in person. We all, I think we all want in-person learning, not the dismissal of kids from the schools. Let's keep our kids in school and let's keep our students and staff as safe as we can keep them. So for me, using a two percent metric, I appreciate that, that level that you've chosen because to me, it is a bit of, of accommodation for the inadequacy of our dashboard data. And that, the dashboard data is all we're allowed by law to collect. I understand that. But it's a poor metric by which to make these kinds of decisions. So I support the, I support your motion and I support the two percent number.
Hate to put Stan on the spot here, but at two percent or three percent, do you have any access to anything that would know whether we've had any schools that would have exceeded this?
I have current numbers. Okay. So Mike, would you pull up the current percentages by building? So you'll see that our buildings are below one percent, except for Prescott, which is slightly above one percent. So if the three percent or two percent were enacted currently, there would be no mask mandates in any of our schools.
And what about the trend or past record? That's, that's current, but you probably have an idea, right?
Let's see, how could I? I, I guess I wasn't expecting.
You don't have to do that.
I just, I assumed you might wanna know what it meant today.
Yeah, and this is where we are today.
That's very helpful.
I. Are you done? Okay, I have a couple of comments. Um, as you know, we take tallies on two separate ones, students and staff.
And this is both.
So would this be combining the staff and the students?
Correct, the data I shared there, I'm sorry, was.
Yeah. And with the motion, is that your?
Could you leave that up, Mike? Yes.
Your motion, does it include just the students or the whole building? Everyone in the building?
Total building population.
Okay.
It says in that building.
Okay. Then the other concern is, we've talked a lot about students that really have difficulty in wearing those masks. For medical reasons, just, you know, there's a lot of reasons. So how does a student, if we do reach that two or three percent, how do they get exempted? You know, who, who's gonna follow that? Who's gonna make those decisions?
I can, if you're asking me.
Whoever.
I can tell you, in other districts, they, they have a law, a form online that is filled out and presented to the principal or the superintendent.
And then a decision is made by that person based on what's submitted in the form?
Correct. Based on the information on the form.
I would.
And there are two types of exemptions that are available, religious exemption as well as the medical exemption.
And not to get too technical, to say this got passed, are those people stepping forward now or waiting till that school reaches that percentage and then you're kinda bombarded with making those decisions?
I guess I, I haven't thought about that detail.
Okay.
You know, we're gonna end up here.
All right.
I suppose both, right? Somebody could do it preemptively or somebody could wait until we were at that point.
Is there any other board comments?
Two percent's too low. Two percent's too low. And I, and I don't think our parents are familiar at all with the notion of exemptions. I don't think they even know that that exists.
Wouldn't that be our responsibility to make them aware of it, though?
We could, I mean, certainly, sure. But there should, people should be aware today that, how aware were our parents last year about exemptions? How much did we make them aware last year that their exemption, that you can get an exemption?
I don't know that we had exemptions last year, I'm not sure of that. But it seems to me that if, if the board takes this action tonight, part of communicating that as a, a board decision would be to also communicate about the exemption option that the board would put forward.
Well, if I can add then, Jim, again, I, I would love to see a three percent. I know Tom talked about this earlier, about the exemption of those students who, for whatever reason, they just can't put the mask on because of the physical or emotional. I would like to see that as part of the motion as well, that that exemption is there if possible.
Would you accept an amendment to your motion to three percent?
Uh.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with three percent. I mean, I think, just looking at this now, like, these are some of the higher numbers that we've seen to date, despite the.
Okay, well, first of all, the question is for an amendment to the motion. If you're, are you willing to make an amendment to your motion for a three percent?
I wanna point something out here. I, kinda two percent, I know it kind of is maybe lowball figure. It's lower than Waterloo, Cedar Falls, whatever. Um, in the same token, I'm concerned about our students. And this also, I should point out, this applies to a building, okay? So this does not, we're not only talking about elementary here. Am I, that's, that's, that's my intent.
So you're K-12 with this?
Yes.
Wait, say that again.
What?
K, he's K.
Oh, I thought you were all schools. K-12.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
K-12, yep.
But PK-12?
PK-12.
P, PK-12, right.
Right, building.
Uh, timeout. Was everybody clear on that?
No.
So we're saying, so help me understand. So you're, what you're saying is, you're saying this metric applies to all nineteen, whatever we have, buildings in the district on a building by building basis, but it's not just K six, K five.
Nope.
It's K, okay, I just wanna make sure I understand.
I don't know if I had that in my.
So it's a per building. If a building gets to that number, that building would mask for a temporarily.
Right.
Part and then it would come off, right? Is that what the, yes?
Can you say again, what, what would be the means by which, if, if a mask requirement was imposed because of the data, what would then reverse that decision and remove the mask mandate? Did you actually say?
I mentioned outdoor activities.
No, when would it come off?
Oh, when would it come off?
Yes.
Five days after the positivity rate is reached.
Base, oh, after the level of positivity would drop below.
Right, I think that's similar to what one of the districts has.
The, the districts that I presented only do, they don't do daily dashboards. So they do it on Friday. So on Friday, they look at their data. If it's above three percent, the following week, there's a mask mandate. They look at the data the following Friday. If it's above three percent, they have a mask mandate. If it falls below that, then the mask goes off. That's why they do five days, because they don't do a daily dashboard.
So how would that work when we do a daily?
Well, what's the motion? Whatever the board tells me.
What's your motion?
Like, some districts, I think, would do a rolling average, maybe if you're updating it more often, just to throw that out.
I have five calendar days after the positivity rate is reached.
And reviewed.
That'd be calendar days, that would not mean school days, though, right?
With the data, I presume, I, your motion, I thought you meant five school days. And then that it would be reviewed, I'm thinking, again, I'm not trying to shape your motion, that it would be reviewed as superintendent's saying, every Fri, every Friday thereafter.
Correct, I'm just pointing out what the other districts do. I'm not making, you know, so we could look at it on a daily basis every fifth day.
So I need to amend this to include a weekly?
Well, would it not be when the rate comes down, then the mask can go off?
Yeah.
So when the rate goes down, then the mask can come off.
That's right. Yep.
And that if the district is doing an every Friday update, it would be an every Friday review of?
So we're gonna change from daily update to only Friday update?
Yeah. I, cuz Friday, I think, aren't the numbers usually lower Friday? Or is it Monday? One of the days, like, it's always because of the way that it comes on and off.
Fridays are generally our low day.
Right.
Well, I am willing to amend this to a three percent as well.
Okay.
Okay.
You seconded, are you willing? Okay, the motion has been amended to a three percent by the person who made the motion and the person who seconded.
With exemption, I'm sorry.
With three percent with exemption, noted exemption.
So exemptions for medical?
Medical and religious.
And religious reasons, any else?
And mental.
And mental.
What, what would that look like, Mr. Barton?
Well, we've gotten an avalanche of emails from parents saying that, that the, that the masks mess with their kids. And so that's, I think, a major issue here. It's, it's, you know, look, I, no one here wants other kids to get sick. I mean, I don't think that's, that's nothing I've really heard. The, the issue that I've heard, and again, I don't know if I'm gonna support this for sure or not. I gotta hear the whole thing when it gets pieced together here.
Yeah.
But the, but a major issue is, so I'm a parent whose kid has issues when they're forced to wear masks. And so therefore, if there's a physical reason or a mental reason or a religious reason, or I would say we give our principals the ability to make those judgments. And then, then essentially, it leaves the door open for parents who really, really have a concern to say, I can choose for my kid. Now, my guess is that if a, if, anecdotally, I may be way off the mark. My gut tells me, if a building is seeing a rise in cases, the vast majority of parents are gonna say, you know what? That's a little bit of a concern. They can understand the fact, most parents, I think, would go along with, as long as we don't set the floor too low, my gut tells me most parents would be okay as long as they felt that that, that percentage number, the threshold, was high enough to say, you know what, maybe it's not a bad idea if my kid wears a mask for a few days. I think most parents would probably be okay with that. There are a lot of parents, though, who are gonna say, my kid, and I know my kid better than anybody else, shouldn't wear a mask under virtually any circumstances because I know my kid. And so I think this leaves the door open for parents to take care of their kids the way they wanna take care of their kids, while the vast majority of people would most likely go along with a mandate in one building only with a sunset provision if the threshold is reasonable to people.
This kinda sounds like, sorry, Tom, I'm sorry. Are you finished?
I'm done.
This kinda sounds like back to people's choice. You know, I, I fear we open this door, and I opened it, I know I did. I opened this door, you know, for emotional, social, physical, all these exemptions. We're gonna have an overflow of exemptions and then we're back to family's choice. I, I love that we continue the dashboard so families can stay informed, make their decision when they send their children to school. And they still have the decision to do online learning if they choose. I still feel strongly it should be family's choice. I would not support any of this. Three percent, two percent?
No, three percent, no, two percent.
I just look at it as, I'm not gonna, I, I don't think we need to be coming back and talking about this after, wherever this direction goes. We need, the district needs to have this to be able to, to move forward. And if, I don't know if this is a way that would be able to say, we look at a building and if there is a, a high increase, like Tom was saying, you know, parents say, okay, if there's an uptick, it's a temporary requirement for masks. There are exceptions. It, it, it is at least showing that we could possibly be doing something. I don't know, I, I don't know. Three percent to me is better than two percent. Um, all right.
Well, let's take it like senior or Hempstead. If it's three, if it's three percent, how many students would that be, ballpark?
Mike, would you pull that side up, please?
Fifty-one, seventeen hundred kids at senior, fifty-one in a hundred staff. You'd have, you'd have fifty-four.
Hempstead would be fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Senior, slightly smaller, would be forty-seven. Mike, could you pull up the current data, please?
Are you talking about two percent?
No, 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 the data you had. No, 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 the data you had before.
Are these numbers two or three?
Those are 3%, I'm sorry, I thought that was the question.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
What is 3% of? Fifty-some, yeah.
Yeah, so if you see today at Hempstead, we're at 17, the number at 3% is 55. Was there another question?
No, I think that's reasonable.
I have a, I'll call it a friendly amendment, that might help us define the exemption. When our, Iowa law requires certain vaccinations for a child to enter kindergarten. And it's very spelled out in the Iowa code, what those exemptions are. I can't quote that to you from memory, it's been a few years. But I would suggest as a friendly amendment that we use that definition for those vaccine exemptions to be used for this as well. Because it is already spelled out, it's a common practice among our parents, and it's widely accepted by our medical, by our nurses and director of nursing.
I don't know that I agree with that, because a mask is not a vaccine. And we're not even going towards vaccines, this is something...
I'm not talking about vaccines.
I know, I know you're not, but to put that, to say that we do this because of that, that's a totally different way of looking at it. And masks have brought out different issues for people that they were never even aware of, because we've never done this before. When you get an email from a parent who is desperate because of the anxiety it causes their child, and it gives them claustrophobic and anxiety because they can't read the expression on somebody because of a trauma that they went to, went through, that's a, that's a good...
It's a real thing.
A real reason, for me, to say, "I get it." You know, for me to force that on you, so to just keep it limited because of what the Iowa has done, I think that's too restrictive for what is flexible, I...
We could leave it then in the spirit of leaving, I mean, we have to hand our principals and our district team something that they can manage. The Iowa code for the, I understand that we're not talking about vaccine for, a vaccine, and it's unfortunate, that's the other definition. But we do have defined exemption language in the Iowa code. We could take that and add a category of "other" to be determined by those who are the reviewers of the application, based on the circumstance as it's described. I think that puts our principals or our superintendent in a difficult spot. But the minute we step into exemptions, we're in that spot. So at least that would give us some defined language that's already created, and add a category of "other."
So medical, religious reasons? Brain health?
First of all, from a process standpoint, a friendly amendment has been suggested.
Yes.
Is it accepted, or is it not accepted?
Yes.
You made the motion.
I accept it, yes.
Does the person who seconded?
So now the motion, so it's...
He made the motion.
Yep.
Anderson, you seconded, do you accept that friendly amendment?
Yep, with a 3% and the exemption, yes.
With Nancy's require, Nancy's restrictions of...
I haven't seen that, so I don't feel comfortable in it.
So you don't accept that?
That seemed like it'd be cumbersome to me a little bit, but I...
Well, you just accepted it.
You accepted her motion.
I accepted your motion, yeah.
You accepted her amendment, her friendly amendment. But Anderson did not, so it does not go forward on that friendly amendment. So the motion is as we are right now. Let me see if I can get this with all the changes.
Scratching.
That effective Monday, the 18th, the Dubuque Community School District utilizes the dashboard data to determine a mask, a temporary mask mandate to be in effect for all employees, students, parents, visitors, in any building. When the positivity rate is 3% or higher at that building, this mandate will last for five calendar days. Now, this is the part where I have questions. It lasts for five calendar days after the 3% positivity rate is reached. Outdoor activities, including student recess or classes, and indoor activities such as lunch and recess that occur in a large area where distancing can be maintained, are excluded, and there will be exemptions for medical, brain health, and religious reasons. That is the motion. May I have a voice vote?
Hold on, hold on. So I'm confused, because I heard five days, and then I heard when it comes back under either the 2% or 3%. Those are two different things. So I just, I don't have the clarity.
We, just for clarification, we can do, I think the question was, what can the district do? Well, we can do both, because, or either, I should say, not both. We can do either, based on the fact that we update our dashboard daily. My point earlier about the week piece is that the districts in question update their dashboard weekly. So if the board would prefer, once you hit 3%, if the motion prefers that once we hit 3%, that is on for an automatic five days, that's a motion. Or the motion could be until it drops below that 3%, which could be one day, three days, 10 days, based on the percentage. So it could be either based on time, or it can be based on the percentage. And if the question to me is, can we, we can handle either one of those. Either are actionable by staff.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be easier for the district to manage if it was the percentage rate, when the positivity rate drops below the 3% or 2% or whatever we end up with?
It's truly the same. We would either send out a message saying that from this time to this time is when a mask will be, because, you know, Hempstead reached, went above the 3%, or it's a day-by-day decision, and we would communicate that approximately at 3:30 when the dashboard is updated, what the situation would be for the next day.
Mr. Frosky, is the spirit of your motion that it would be a five-day masking, or that it would be when the positivity rate drops below that?
I'd like Stan to, it could be either.
Well, you've got to decide one of this.
The motion has to define one, so I know what to do.
Oh, okay, so let's...
Which one would, which?
I'm not in favor of this, but this seems chaotic for a school, a principal, a building to follow. And parents.
That's why, you know, it's possible, since we can get data every day, that maybe it could be an average, a rolling average. So it's not like, well, Wednesday it went below, and Thursday it's above, and you're not bouncing back and forth.
Are you suggesting a five-day rolling average?
That would work.
Five calendar days, or after?
Yeah, and I won't support that, and I'll tell you why. We, you look at Hempstead, just Thursday, they were at...
34.
34, Friday, they were at 17, right?
Something like that.
Today, they were...
Today, they're at 17.
Something like that. The number got cut in half in one day. I just, I think if we're below, I think, I don't think it's all that difficult to say, "Have a mask handy if we're above 3%." I'm still not necessarily sold on 3, I'd feel more comfortable with 4. But 3, to me, is some kind of common ground, I know it's not 2, for me. But, and then I want to, I'd also like to know, very specifically, about what we've decided on the exemptions, how we're going to articulate that to parents, or how we could articulate that to parents. Because that, the exemptions, to me, is a big, big deal in this thing. Because it puts control back into the hands of a parent who really has an issue. And that's, that's very important to me. It's been important both ways, and you'll be, Stan, you have to, you would have to agree. I've followed up with you a number of times, as we have not had a mask mandate, saying, "Hey, what are you hearing? Are we doing everything we can for the kids who are not comfortable in school right now?" And I'm hearing that, yes, a lot of accommodations are going on. So that door swings both ways for me. So, but, can you talk to me more about the exemptions? And how we go, number one, tell me one more time what they are, because I've heard different things.
Exemptions for medical, brain health, and religious reasons.
But nothing else?
Nope.
So a parent has some other issue that we didn't think of here in the last 10 minutes? The principal doesn't have any license to say, "Wait a minute here, that's reasonable."
That goes back to Nancy's.
No, it doesn't, it's completely different. It's completely, we don't even know what Nancy's, Nancy admits that she doesn't know what that list is.
No, but she said the responsibility would be to the building administrator.
Well, you didn't read that, I didn't hear that. So is that in there, or isn't that in there?
Well, give me a suggestion about how I could add that.
It's your motion, Jim.
Okay.
I think it's important that the parents really understand this. Or do we just strongly advise mask-wearing during this time? Instead of mandating it, strongly advise it.
Sure. Well, it seems like that's what we've already been doing, and that's not really meeting what folks are asking us to do.
Not all folks, though.
Right, of course, of course not all. But again, strongly advising is the status quo we're at now. And I think a lot of us want to do something beyond that at this point. And defining that is tricky, as we're learning. But I think we do need to keep in mind, like, the goal should be for us to live up to our mission of providing this safe learning environment for kids, and for all of the kids in our schools. And this gets us a little closer to that in my mind. And especially, you know, because of the potential impact it can have for young kids who can't get vaccinated. So I just think we need to, like, keep them in our minds as we're talking about this.
Okay, I have added, with exemptions for medical, religious reasons, brain health, or building administrator judgment was the word I used.
I can't imagine being a principal and interpreting who wears a mask and who doesn't in that scenario.
I would request that if you're going to go to administrative decision, please make that the superintendent, and not all of us, because everybody's going to interpret it differently.
Superintendent.
Rules a different building, so, okay, that's the desire of the board, please make that meet. So that's one person.
Are you saying you have time, your schedule left between like 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM?
You have another job, Stan.
So I just want to make sure that it's consistent. Because else it's going to be impossible.
Okay, we understand, okay. With, I'll read it again, with exemptions for medical, religious reasons, brain health reasons, or superintendent judgment?
Or the discretion of the superintendent, what's the best way?
How about discretion of the superintendent or designate? Because that...
One person.
But the buck stops with you, but if you say, "Look, these couple other people can make a decision on your behalf."
Wow. I would suggest, in terms of the definition of brain health and us not having one, that I would rather see that come through the discretionary decision-making of the superintendent, than it would be medical, religious, and other discretionary factors that would be approvable by the superintendent of schools.
And this is only going to last for five days? It might take five days to sort through all this.
My only, that, I understand where you're going with that. Essentially, if you just let it all up to the principal, you know, you could, that's another way to... My concern is, if I'm a parent and I see a list of things that I, things that I can fall back on to feel like I have control over my kid's destiny, the thing that I hear repeatedly from parents, I don't know what the number might be, 5 to 1, 6 to 1, whatever the number is, is, "This messes with my kid's psychology." I don't know what the phrase is for that, I don't know what the, I don't know what the term is for that. But I, but I think that is more so than probably, from what I've heard, physical or religious, that to me feels like the issue. So I understand where you're coming from, I don't think you're crazy. I just don't know what the, it feels to me like it warrants being line itemed out if we're going to have a line item list. Because to me, I think that's almost the prevailing concern of those who would want an exemption.
It just seems to me that if we left it as other discretionary factors at the behest of the superintendent or designate, that we, we leave it open to whatever factors a parent is believing about their child, that would make them want to request that there be an exemption. By narrowing it, I think we, we make it harder to say yes. By leaving it broad, I think we make it easier to say yes.
I would, I think we might be on the same page. I would agree that we still have the other, the line in there about, or other things that the superintendent can, or designate can rule on. But if we have those other two items, a third item along with that, in addition to the superintendent having discretion, I, I guess I, maybe I'm beating a dead horse. But I just think when parents, when we communicate this to parents, for parents to see that line item, to me makes sense to have that thing highlighted, because that, to me, is the overarching reason why parents, why I've heard from parents that they don't want their kids wearing masks.
We just simply don't have a definition for it. So absent a definition, I feel like we leave the superintendent really in an awkward spot. Whereas if we say, a parent says, "Here's the deal about my child." You know, "It's this factor, and this factor, and this factor makes me request that you make an exemption for mask-wearing." And if we don't further define it from that, superintendent in conversation with that parent can make a decision that's probably a better informed decision than if we start to put categories in that are hard to interpret, and therefore be consistent about. If you come with a doctor's permission saying, "This kid should not be wearing a mask," that's real easy to interpret. But if you, if you simply know about your child this thing, it doesn't warrant a doctor's judgment, it's simply something I know about my child, then if we leave it at other discretionary factors, we leave it for Stan to ferret that out, or whomever he names, to really make that judgment in concert with the parent.
Stan, do you feel like there's enough guidance there, when you create whatever correspondence this thing that is created with this, that, that parents will be able to understand?
Yeah, we will develop some written, some emails, some conversation around this, so that people understand what their options are. That if we should ever reach 3% or whatever threshold the board chooses, if we should ever reach that, or if you want to preempt that, because again, today, there's nobody at 3%, everybody's 1% or below. They could preempt, I mean, they could do that, starting as soon as that's, it takes a day or two to create that, but that way, they'd have that on file, or we'd have that on file, we could, you know, plow through them that way. But we can make, I can make that work.
Okay.
If the board's willing to trust my discretion.
Are we ready for the motion, to hear what the motion has come out to? It says, I can read it. It says, "I move that effective Monday, October 18th, the Dubuque Community School District utilized district dashboard data to determine a temporary mask mandate to be in effect for all employees, students, parents, and visitors to a building where that building positivity rate is 3% or higher. This mandate will be until that positivity rate is lowered. Any outdoor activities, including student recess, classes, and indoor activities such as lunch or recess that occurs in a large area where distancing can be maintained, are excluded, and there will be exemptions for medical, religious, brain health, or at the discretion of the superintendent or his designate." Did I get that right, does everybody have that?
I would offer a friendly amendment to drop brain health. I think it is so ill-defined in the context of this.
I think that's the most important reason the families don't want the mask.
It was a friendly amendment, do you want to drop the...
I would like to speak to my friendly amendment.
Okay, go ahead, sure.
That is to say, that we're trying to keep the options more open than to use some, a term that we don't have definition for. That for some would be defined one way and some another way. Therefore, if it just simply is left to other factors at the discretion of the superintendent or his designate, then we have allowed for brain health, but not confined to something we don't have definition for. That's my friendly amendment.
I would not like to accept that, I would not.
Okay.
So brain health's back in.
Brain health's still in, nothing has changed from what I just read.
Brain health is still...
Are we ready for a vote? We will have a voice vote, please.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohaska?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Sancy?
Aye.
Whitman?
No.
Barton?
Aye.
Bradley?
Aye.
That motion does carry. All right, thank you, board. We had a lengthy discussion on this. We more have more, do you need a, can we take a five? More... Do you need a... Can we take a five-minute recess for a bathroom break? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess for a... Five-minute recess. All right, we will reconvene our meeting, and we are now on to our consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve these items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to have any items pulled? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Parks, Facilities and Support Services.
All right, so we have a number of motions which basically summarize the meeting, so let's just do those, shall we? I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from Cub Scout PAC 55 in the estimated amount of $791 for three trees planted at Kennedy Elementary School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Cub Scout PAC 55 in the estimated value of $791 for three trees planted at Kennedy Elementary School. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education reject the bid for the purchase of two passenger vans from Finn and Ford.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reject the bid for two... For the purchase of two passenger vans from Finn and Ford. Is there any discussion?
I would just ask, since this is a very irregular, unusual motion, could there someone comment on why we would reject that bid? Is that you, Kevin?
It means that the original intent for the vans is no longer needed.
The purpose, so the district does not have discretionary funds to just purchase the two, so we would like to just reject the bid.
Excellent. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon Construction on the Senior Additions and Renovations Phase Two Project in the increased amount of $79,598.34.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon Construction on the Senior Additions and Renovation Phase Two Project in the increased amount of $79,598.34. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Norcostco for the Dubuque Senior High School Additions and Renovations Phase Two Theatrical Luminary's project in the amount of $98,445.
Second. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Norcostco for the Dubuque Senior High School Additions and Renovation Phase Two Theatrical Luminary's project in the amount of $98,445... $445. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Drew Cook and Sons Excavating. It's a little tricky. On the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project in the increased amount of $3,173.38.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Drew Cook and Sons Excavating on the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project in the increased amount of $3,173.38. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Drew Cook and Sons Excavating in the amount of $9,145.55 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project and authorize payment of final project cost to the Drew Cook and Sons Excavating in the amount of $9,145.55 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and Secretary to sign the electric line easement request from Alliant Energy for underground electric and telecommunications lines.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and Secretary to sign the electric line easement request from Alliant Energy for underground electric and telecommunication lines. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Mr. Kelleher.
Yeah, thank you, Board. Three quick things I want to bring your attention to. One, on page 90 of your packet has the total revenues by the different funds for the year. One item, you would notice under the nutrition fund, the total is very low. It's under $100,000. That is because we made our first claim for the school year, starting August 23rd through September 30th in October. We received our reimbursement in the first part of October, and that amounted to over $300,000. So that's the reason. It's a timing thing with that one is why it was so low for the month or for the quarter. Second one is the management fund expenditures, which is on page 92 of your packet. Just wanted to bring your attention, most of the expenditures in the management fund take place in July. We pay our liability, property, work comp insurance, as well as the early retiree payouts from the year before. So most of the expenses in the management fund take place in July. That's why you see the smaller budget balance remaining at this point in time. Third item is in the sales tax fund. You see the budget balance has a negative amount of $6,400,000 at this point. That is simply because the whole contract for the senior project is listed as an encumbrance, and we'll have about $19 million that we will spend in years beyond '21, '22. So if you were to add that back, we would have a positive budget balance in the sales tax fund. Any clarification questions or any other questions on that? All right, thank you.
All right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
We're good?
We're good. All right, thank you. That now takes us to our Ed Programs and Policy Committee Report. Mr. Sancy.
Yep. At our last ed meeting, we had Ms. Raper who came, and she talked about a temporary partnership that we have with our local libraries where students will be able to use their ID cards to be able to check out books and other items. And so we think that is a good opportunity to really make sure our students have access to books and other items that they choose to have. Also, workforce is a huge issue just throughout the community. And one of the things we are trying to do to address workforce is build our own workforce. So we do have a partnership with NICC and Clark where currently a student who's interested in becoming a teacher one day can take over 51 to 52 college courses here while they're still here in the district. So that is super cool, and hopefully, we have a lot of students who participate in that. And I believe there's a variety of other efforts that we are working on to make sure that we're just making sure students are college and career-ready. And so thank you to Mark and his team for putting this pathway together. And then we reviewed some policies.
All right. Thank you. That takes us now to new business. I need some motions on this.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date for public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $16 million school infrastructure sale service and use tax revenue refunding bonds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $16 million in school infrastructure sale service and use tax revenue refunding bonds. Do you want to kind of...
Want to tell us about? Yeah, the intent of this is because our financial advisor has let us know that it could be financially favorable for the district if we were to pay off our 2016 and '17 bonds with refinanced dollars. He estimates we'd save about $480,000 in sales tax revenue by doing that.
Because of the lower rate?
Correct. Interest rates will be lower than what we are currently paying on the bonds.
Great. Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
I just have to laugh at the irony. We had a packed house to talk about the mask thing, but we're throwing $16 million bucks around. Everybody's like, yeah, they'll... We trust them. We'll take care of it. $16 million bucks here and there, taxpayer money, you know, we're good.
We have no public hearing.
Email us. Email us.
Yeah, that's it. We need more.
We don't have enough of those. A roll call vote, please. Barton?
Aye.
Bradley?
Aye.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohaska?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Sancy?
Aye.
Whitman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation for Cyber Security Awareness Month.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation for Cyber Security Awareness Month. Is there any discussion? I was told I don't have to read it. It was in our packet. If you would like to just take a look at it, we are in favor of cybersecurity, so... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the District Emergency Operations Plan.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the District Emergency Operations Plan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 806718 and number 826086 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 806718 and eight... Number 826086 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any board member or administrative issues not on the agenda?
I would just... I would just chime in and say that this... That I do get a kick out of parliamentary procedure. While all the other kids in high school were like hanging out and being cool, I was the Model UN guy. So, you know, parliamentary procedure was a big part of that. So finally, I've been waiting for this opportunity for 37 years.
To have something like this.
Tonight, something like this comes along.
I think we all learned.
I would just thank the citizens, both sides of this issue that weighed in. This is how it's supposed to work. I mean, you're supposed to be able to get good feedback from citizens. I really appreciate the board's patience with this. I think three, four weeks ago, I think we made a better decision by taking our time with this than if we had jumped into something a few weeks back. We were able to see what other districts are doing. We were able to look at our own dashboard. We were able to listen to citizens, which I think is really an important piece. That meeting was grueling three weeks ago, but three and a half hours of citizen input sometimes is what the doctor ordered. And so I'm glad we came to a reasonable conclusion tonight. Jim, you hung in there really well, trying to piece together. I have to appreciate more than trying to throw out a motion that you wanted to dictate to everybody, you were actually there to offer up a rough draft that people could contribute toward. And I... That's not an easy thing to do. And so I appreciate all that you did to help us come to some conclusion. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Tom. And I too am glad that we've come to some type of agreement on this issue. And hopefully, there's more items, and there's more things that we have to be worrying about as far as the school board upcoming in the future, so.
Get back to education.
Thank you to the board.
I might just add to that, that I think would be helpful to us, having gone through this long process, and now with it as it has been crafted tonight. If we would hear from you Superintendent Ryan Gans at our next meeting, have we created something that's workable? Or will there need to be modifications in it to make it really?
Yeah, I'm happy to report out on that. I guess I wanted to share for those who are left that we will communicate in the next day or so, an explanation of what happened here because I think there's probably going to be some wonderings about that. And so we will communicate that hopefully tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest. It takes... It doesn't take effect until Monday. Clearly articulating the 3%, what does that mean for building? Because that does matter to families with building you're in. As I mentioned, the urgency is not quite there in the sense that our buildings are at 1% or below. But we do want people to understand that. I do need to spend some time figuring out how we'll articulate the exemption process. Though there are many schools who do that, and as Tom mentioned, some of them have as much as, you know, 10, 11% of folks on exemption. So I will, with the help of a team, put that together and send that out. I do appreciate that it's left at the superintendent level or designee versus at the building level that puts our building principals in a tough spot to always be making sure that they're making the same decisions as everybody else. If it comes from one person, people can be mad or happy based on that one person not trying to judge or juggle what all the different principals might do. So I do appreciate the changing that to be a one-person decision.
I've said enough tonight about my concerns for the inadequacy of the data. It is what it is. We collect what we're able to collect. Are there ways that we can increase the amount of testing that we would have happening with our students and staff?
Based on parent choice. So we don't do surveillance testing. We're not allowed to do surveillance testing. We're not... That would be a county or state function. We have received more of the take-home tests. We've requested those from the state. I believe we've got about 250 or so, and we can order a resupply as those run low. I understand that it takes, you know, three, four days to get the results. It's what we have right now. We have talked to some other providers about the possibility of purchasing the rapid tests to send home. I think they're... So that... We're not prepared to do that today. But if the demand from the parents would be more the rapid test, we will try to figure out how we can make those available to those who want them. We will be reaching out or have reached out to the county and others to help share in that cost because, again, we're a school district and not a testing facility. And so we would like to push that cost to somebody else. We've got other needs for the funds that we have. But the ones that come from the state are at no cost to us, and they are pre-labeled and pre-hostaged. So there's no cost to the... Biggest issue is just the weight.
So we have no option if a child is suspected to be at risk, perhaps having been exposed? We don't have a way of having the child remain at home until that test result is found? Is that correct?
Can we quarantine students, are you asking me? We cannot quarantine students. Very clear from the state that the only entity that could quarantine is the county. And so we do not have quarantine authority. So when we hand a student a test, or if we notified they may have been an exposure, then the parents have some decisions to make, but we do not have the authority to quarantine. That's correct.
I just think it's important for the community to know that as we look at data. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Just like Tom said, we truly listened to every email, voice that was made, and you guys did help us make our decisions. And thank you so much.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.